Lord, we once again come here together as a group, as a team at St. Pete College. We thank you for the opportunity for this time, for this time together, for this time to discuss the future of our institution, where we're at and where we're going. A time to recognize those who are important and have helped us along the way for to allow each student to find success here, to help reach their dreams and their goals, to aspire for more in life. We thank you for that opportunity and we ask that you never let us take it for granted. Let us remember how important this is in the lives that are shaped and molded here each and every day. We ask for wisdom as we make decisions. I thank you so much for the people who dedicate their time and their lives to St. Pete College. It's in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Where is the flag?
Well, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, I'm sorry. Great, okay, we're going to move into the presentation of retirement resolutions. And we have one this morning, Ted Rogers.
Is Ted here? Are you all alone today, Ted?
We're going to social distance because I'm going to take my mask off so I can read it. Good morning. Said resolution, whereas Frederick H. Rogers, affectionately known as Ted, began his career at St. Petersburg College in 1992 as a faculty member and lead EMT instructor in the Emergency Medical Services Program. And whereas Mr. Rogers has been a prodigious teacher, leader, and mentor. His dedication and commitment to his teaching was acknowledged when he was named EMT Instructor of the Year in 2003 and 2017 by the Florida Association of EMS Educators. In addition to his classroom work, he has served on Bay Care's medical team for 17 years as the EMT slash paramedic at Tropicana Field and the Mahaffey Theater. And whereas Mr. Rogers has an infectious charisma and has contributed to his teaching success, over the years, more than 1,000 students have moved from his SPC classroom to successful EMS careers. He has spearheaded curriculum changes to enhance the college's EMS program and has been a technical advisor and reviewer on several EMS textbooks. And whereas Mr. Rogers' work environment has always been based on support, inclusiveness, diversity, and innovation. He remains passionate about helping others and passing on his knowledge to future generations. He has always been an active participant in professional organizations and served for many years on committees at the local and state levels. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Mr. Frederick Ted Rogers and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 26th day of January 2021. Ted, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Dr. Williams, thank you very much. It's been wonderful to have worked with you earlier in your career in health education and we managed to accomplish quite a bit together while we were there. I've had a wonderful time here with SPC. My program director is counting the days until my one-year drop lockout is completed. And I hope to continue to assist in any way with the program and with the college in the future. And it's been a wonderful adventure and I've enjoyed every minute of it. So again, thank you.
You'll be sorely missed. Thank you so much. We're going to take a picture. Do we have? There he is.
Congratulations, Mr. Rogers, and thank you for your service. We are now going to move into SPC Spotlight. We have a new Associate Vice President of Facilities Planning and Institutional Services.
Yes, good morning. Vice Chair, fellow board members, and Dr. Williams. This morning, I'd like to introduce to you Rod Wheaton. He is the new Associate Vice President of Facilities Planning and Institutional Services. Mr. Wheaton has over 20 years of experience in facilities, planning, and construction and real estate. He comes to us by way of Pinellas County School Board, where he's had over 10 years' experience in educational facilities. And so I'd like to open up the floor in welcoming Mr. Wheaton in the position at SPC and let him share a few words with you. Thank you.
Thank you all. As Ms. Hunt said, I've been in the building, construction, facility management business for a couple of decades now. But I can say without hesitation, my favorite has been the last 10 years because I've been able to work in educational facilities. And what I've enjoyed about that most and appreciate the most, I believe, was mentioned in the invocation, that we allow people the opportunity to give themselves a better future and improve their lives. And I think that's very rewarding. I intend to spend the next couple of years making you glad that I was your choice for this position. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. And I'm looking forward to building relationships with all of you, with the provost and all of the SPC team. So again, I thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to the future together. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment? Will Dr. Diana Wright please stand? Dr. Wright, I just want to thank you for your years of service. And I am congratulating you on starting your own firm. I cannot wait to see it all flourish. You will be sorely missed. You are highly respected and regarded. And we are so looking forward to seeing you on the other side of the table. You have been very supportive, very wise, and very helpful to this family. And I just want to recognize you and thank you for your service. You are greatly appreciated and will be sorely missed.
Okay, moving on to board comments. I suppose I start.
Yes, you might want to let them know that Katie's on the line.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yes, she is.
Okay. Katie, are you there?
Good morning, I am here, yes, thank you.
Good morning. Would you like to do your comments?
I'm okay. I'm sorry that I can't be with you all in person because we're quarantined as my household has been stricken with COVID. But I wanted to be sure to be present as I could.
Thank you so much.
I hope you are safe and everyone's healthy. I just have a quick comment about always being so proud to represent this college. I had an interaction with the Community Foundation not too long ago and learned about our partnership on the mental health certifications. And I'm just always amazed at the things that we're able to accomplish, the way that we're able to pivot to what's going on in our world and make a difference in the community. So thanks to all of you guys for what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Kidwell?
I don't have anything this morning.
Mr. Gibbons?
I do. I would also like to congratulate Dr. Diana Wright on her next venture. I would be remiss if I didn't say that she is probably one of the most organized, well-respected, well-thought-of people in her industry. And I know that she will do well in her company. She is a lady of high integrity, which I much appreciate it. And I look forward to you doing big things and us watching you do those things. So thank you for your service here at the college. And thank you for putting up with all of us, especially me, but putting up with all of us and also in the future, don't hesitate to call. You're still a part of this family. Even though you don't work here, you're still a part of our family. Thank you.
Dr. Williams?
Yes. I definitely have something. We definitely want to thank the marketing and communication team for the work that they did for the MLK Breakfast. It was virtual and they put the production on. It's a part of our involvement in the community and it was very good. Also want to recognize Dr. Tara Newsome for the work she's doing with the food pantries and food deliveries. We did a lot of that for the MLK Day of Service. I am very proud of one of our very own, Dr. Matthew Sims. He's a professor in humanities. He has written a book that comes out in a couple of weeks called Ancient Greeks on the Human Condition: Things of Homer, Aristophes, am I saying that right, Euripides, and I'm not going to try the last name. But he teaches at SPC and his book is out. It'll be on Amazon soon. Actually, it looks like it already is. And then I want to thank the Seminole campus for their work on serving the delegation. We hosted them last week. It turned out fantastic. So to Mark Strickland and team and Eric for their work. We learned a lot about what's happening in the state there and that was very good. You saw that our very own, Dr. Jamel Connor, was recognized as a patriotic employer, which is a big deal as we move forward. Also want to recognize Seminole again. Their Phi Theta Kappa achieved the five stars two years in a row, which is very interesting during COVID that their chapter did not stop. It continued to work remotely and it won that award. Then I want to give Katie Schultz, Dr. Schultz and team, kudos for the work they've done with Healios. We received another $85,000 to help support African-American males, which is another feather in our hat. And then finally, I have a lot, but I'm not going to do it all, but our marketing team received six gold standard awards during the 2020 Annual Conference for the Association of Florida Colleges for some of our print work, our multimedia and web and social services. So they received those awards and they received one bronze award for social media on Giving Tuesday. And so very proud of the work that we're doing and the recognition that the college is receiving in spite of COVID and online. So that is my report, Madam Chair, for today.
Thank you. Congratulations. This is exciting. We're going to open up for public comment. I have two cards. I understand two people. So we're going to start with Terry Lee. You have three minutes and when the timer stops, you've got to stop.
Can I wear my mask while I speak or do I take it off?
That's a personal decision.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
Well, it's a little hard to breathe, so I'm going to take it off.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Good morning, I'm Terry Lee. I was a research scientist for the Department of Interior until a few years ago and now I'm adjunct faculty for St. Pete College. I teach classes for the Natural Sciences Department at Seminole. I was on the bargaining committee for the newly ratified adjunct faculty union contract. I wanted to say thank you for ratifying our first contract and for the cooperation we've received from members of the administration and the Board of Trustees. One milestone of this first contract is creation of an adjunct faculty roster. In this published roster, St. Pete College formally recognizes the adjunct faculty as an integral workforce for the college and we appreciate that. In the fall of 2019, before COVID struck, that roster had 723 adjunct faculty teaching over 1,600 college classes for St. Pete College. When COVID struck that spring, this same workforce, including me, feverishly revamped over 800 face-to-face classes to go online virtually overnight, allowing students to complete the spring classes. In the fall of 2020, 56 fewer adjuncts were hired to teach 109 fewer college classes. It is this large, flexible, dedicated, highly educated, unsalaried, integral workforce for St. Pete College that is being acknowledged in the new roster. COVID-19 adds greatly to the uncertainty of adjunct faculty hiring. That's why in this first contract, the administration has agreed to pay adjunct faculty $150 if a course that they were asked to teach is canceled or taken away within two weeks of the start of the semester. This be as important in its symbolism. With it, St. Pete College is recognizing the commitment made by the adjunct faculty to teach the class and the sudden and substantial economic loss to the instructor when that class is taken away. It gives the instructor a modest financial compensation for the hours they invested preparing to teach the class. These gains and others mutually agreed upon in this first contract are a promising beginning. The adjunct faculty and the Florida Public Services Union look forward to continuing to work with the administration and the Board of Trustees in the best interest of the entire St. Petersburg College community. Thank you.
Next I have Jamaica Reddick. Ms. Reddick?
I'm not here.
I'm, thank you, I'm sorry, it's loading, one second. I apologize, my comment, my phone is not connecting to the Wi-Fi, so I'm trying to get my comment up. Thanks for everybody's patience.
Ms. Reddick, in the interest of time, is it something that you could share with the board?
Yeah. So I'll just go ahead and start. I apologize. So thank you, everybody. Thank you to the Board of Trustees. My name is Jamaica Dawn Reddick. I am from Service Employees International Union, Florida Public Services Union. I'm the lead organizer for St. Petersburg College's adjunct union. I just wanted to say thank you so much to the Board of Trustees for passing, helping us to pass the adjunct union's first contract. We ratified this contract last month and we ratified it at the highest rate in the state. Thus far, 164 adjuncts voted yes in support of this. And we're just so looking forward to continuing this relationship between the Board of Trustees and the adjunct union. And on behalf of all of the adjuncts that voted yes for better working conditions, for the ability to continue to work at St. Petersburg with the support of the union. Many adjuncts were impacted by the low enrollment, not low enrollment, but the reduced enrollment the past semester. One of the parts of the contract that is significant is adjuncts who do lose a course have the ability to gain recourse in the amount of $150. So as a part of us moving forward and taking that first step, we were hoping that all of the adjuncts that were impacted could receive some kind of restitution in the way of that $150 for that course cancellation fee after the contract is passed. We're so looking forward to continuing to working with the St. Petersburg College Administration. And we know when we all stand together, not just as adjuncts, faculty, but with the full-time faculty, the administrative staff, and of course, the students, all of us benefit. Please let us know how we can continue to build this relationship. And we sincerely look forward to continuing to move forward together. Thank you so much and have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick. That is the end of the public comments that I have. Oh, closed. Public comment closed. Moving on to the review and approval of the minutes from our meeting of November 17, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also, the review and approval of the Strategic Planning Workshop of December 15. Can I get a motion to approve that as well?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Monthly reports, Ms. Gardner, do you have anything for us this morning?
Good morning. I don't have a report this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a report from the board's attorney?
Capital City, no, no report from the board's attorney.
No, okay. Moving on to strategic focus, legislative priorities. Can I have Mr. Chris Schoenover from?
Schoenover.
Schoenover. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Partner at Capital City Consulting for legislative update?
Yep. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I can't, I think if someone clicked through the next screen. Madam Chair, trustees, thank you for having me today. I appreciate it and want to give you guys a little bit of an update following up on the last board meeting I presented to, which was last year. And this week is a committee week, so a lot is happening in the 2021 session. As you can see before you, there are a total of four committee weeks remaining. So from here, straight for, it's basically four straight weeks of committee meetings. So right now, the legislature is meeting in committees, hearing bills that have been filed as well as presentations from various agencies on a litany of topics. The governor will likely release his budget this week. Next week, his staff is presenting their, his budget to all of the relevant committees. So we'll be keeping an eye out for that on the college system and to see what they recommend. As you recall, the regular session, 60-day session, does start on March 2 and will conclude on April 30 of 2021. Next screen. Thank you. Since we last met, both the Senate President and Speaker of the House have finalized their committee chairs. And these next two slides will give you a highlight of the chairs and vice chairs of the relevant committees that impact St. Pete College. So you can see that appropriations chair, as we discussed before, is Kelly Stark from Polk County. In the education arena, on the appropriations side, you have Senator Doug Broxton from Pensacola. And then Senator Manny Diaz is the vice chair from Miami-Dade. And then on the policy side, you have Senator Joe Gruters as chair and representative, sorry, Senator Shepard Jones as vice chair from Broward County. And what's unique is Representative Jones is a Democrat. So Senate President Simpson realized that, you know, Senator Jones has a great knowledge of experience, education, and wanted to point him at a leadership position on the Senate Policy Committee. So that's a good, that's very good. Next one. So as you can see, the House has several more committees. They always do. And I know there's a lot on the screen, so I'm just going to highlight a couple of the more key ones. As we discussed before, appropriations chair is Representative Trump from Panama City. And the Higher Education Appropriations Subcommittee, you have Renee Placencia from Seminole County. And then the next three are the Policy Committee. So the big chair is your state representative. Chair Lot Hala is the policy chair for education. And then below him, there are three different subcommittees, as you see below you. And they'll be taking up different proposals that could impact you that we'll be monitoring. Next slide. Thank you. So since we last met, the revenue impacts the state of Florida due to COVID-19 have adjusted. The, when we've last met, the impact was significantly more than what they're seeing now. So things are improving. However, as we look in the long-term fiscal impacts of COVID-19, they are still pretty significant, as you can see before you. So according to the EDR estimates, over the next three fiscal years, in the near term, you'll see that there is a $2.75 billion deficit estimated by the Office of Economic Development and Research that the legislature will have to deal with this legislative session. So that means they're going to have to cut the budget by $2.75 billion. The House has taken a look at it and what they're, whether they recommend it or not, it's still too early to decide, but they took, what is the amount of the higher education budget and the budget itself? And it actually is about 13% of what that cut would be. So if the House were to do a pro-rata cut, it would be a $357 million cut to higher education. Whether they do that or not, we're not sure yet, but they just use it as an example. But I wanted to put that there just to show you the significance of the impact of what a budget cut would look like if it was a pro-rata amount. But that is, that is very likely to happen. I'll be honest with you all, it's, as I mentioned the last time we met, the legislature's going to have to make some very tough decisions regarding the next budget. And it's going to be a significant impact to the legislature, to the state, and also to the college system. What, what we don't know yet is if they will combine the fiscal year 2022, '23 and '21, '22 together, so that way they make a significant cut this year. So when they come back for the next session, they won't have to make as many draconian cuts because they've, you know, been very conservative and made cuts now. So we'll be monitoring that and I'll continue to keep President Williams and Eric updated on that. Next slide. So I always get questions, you know, what's happening with COVID-19 and the access to the Capitol? I know you all have, you know, students are interested, faculty are interested. So as we sit right now, the Senate is still doing remote access to committee hearings. They are, public is not allowed in there except if you're testifying as an invited guest, not just a member of the public, so if you're an invited guest. Additionally, virtual meetings with the legislature. So all the senators are encouraged to do their meetings remotely using Microsoft Zoom Teams or Zoom. And then in the Florida House, the House is suggesting virtual meetings and they are actually allowing public to sit in the committee meetings if they so choose so. There's a limited amount of space, so you have to reserve your space ahead of time. Next slide. So as we look to this session, I work with President Williams, Eric, and staff on what are our requests this session? So first off, you know, it's not on here, but it should be no shock to you all that our first objective is going to be to work with the legislature to mitigate any significant reductions to your base operation funding. There will be cuts to the higher education system. There is no doubt about that. So our first priority would be to protect you all and try to minimize those cuts as much as possible. Second off, you know, the first thing you say, well, why are we asking for two projects if we're fighting cuts? And, and here's why, is there is, there is federal money coming down. And we, it is unknown yet on what could happen with the Biden administration if there will be another COVID package that could put a significant amount of resources into the state of Florida. And if that were to happen and legislature were so fortunate to not have to make such significant cuts, we'd like to have some budget requests in the hopper submitted. So if there is money, we're not, we're not sitting there with nothing put in. So these two asks before you have been submitted into the system and we will have them in play for the session if there is funding available to do local projects. The first one is additional funding for the Midtown Campus and it would be to enhance their technological ability there with computers and minor renovations to allow those students there to access ways to reach job force, to improve their education there. The second one would be the first of its kind in the state of Florida and would be a public safety simulation city, which is, you know, already exists at St. Pete College. This would be to enhance it. You all have a fantastic operation there and, you know, this House and Senate are taking law enforcement very serious and they'll be pushing forward some proposals. So we took this opportunity to brag on what you have set up there too with your students and law enforcement, fire and EMS. So this amount of $510,000 would provide some additional funds to enhance the facility there on your campus, to provide your students with additional training opportunities. And I think that is the last slide, so I'll take any questions.
I have one comment. First of all, thank you. It's just been great to have Capital City and the work that we're doing. The legislative requests that we have also align with the governor's vision for Florida to be the number-one workforce state. And so workforce continues to be a big piece going forward. And so workforce continues to be a big piece going forward. Chris, I wanted to make sure that we did not miss the focus of Senator Brandis and the Collegiate High School, just to make sure that the board is aware of that project, that that is something that Senator Brandis worked with us on last year. It did make it to the governor's desk, and there's a desire to move that forward this year as well. And I just wanted to make sure the board was aware. Both of these projects will be game changers. The public safety will allow us to get more students in because they'll be using simulated learning, as we're doing with nursing and some of our other workforce programs. And the digital divide will help us introduce students and those residents in those areas to opportunities through technology, which is not something that's happening in the, in the Midtown community. We will also continue to work with our legislative delegates on, you know, funding for our general revenue. We'll, we'll continue to try to work on that. But you can see that the budget for the state is going to be more of decreased decline, realignment, and the college is already starting to work on that. We don't know what the, what our portion of the decline will be. Chris, we're already working on it and looking at where we can find those resources, anticipating further cuts in addition to the current holdback that we have right now that, that we're working through. So I want to thank you for that, and I don't know if the board has any questions.
Chair Bello. Chris, thank you for the report. I have a quick question about the projections in fiscal year '21, '22, and onward. So is the, is the $2.75 billion deficit that's estimated, is that including any of the federal funding that came in from the first round of COVID relief? I know you spoke to what may or may not happen with the new Biden administration. Has that already been factored in, what came in in the first round?
It ha, yes, thank you for the question. Yes, it has. So the first round that came in could not be used per the guidelines to offset losses to state revenue. It had to directly impact COVID response. So a lot of the money was actually directly distributed to the entities who received them, whether it's education, hospitals, healthcare. So a lot of it didn't trickle to the state. And there were several questions in the last committee week about that. And the state is assuming that, you know, assume it just never happened because they're looking down the road, and they're saying, you know, as we look to next fiscal year, what should we expect? So they're trying to be as fiscally conservative as they can, assuming that there won't be any. So assume that didn't even impact it. And this amount, one thing I mentioned, is 100% general revenue. So it doesn't even take into account trust funds. So that's why it's going to be so difficult, is because they're looking directly at the general revenue impacts rather than trust fund impacts.
Understood.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Moving on to student success and academic achievement. Dr. Sabrina Crawford. Oh, she's already there. Hi.
Good morning, Chair Bello. Chair Cole, I hope you and your family recover quickly and safely. Good morning, members of the board. Good morning, Dr. Williams. I'm here today to give you an overview of our fall and winter terms, as well as giving you a preview for our spring. Can we go to the next slide? Thank you. All right, so I'm going to start with our fall success rates. And these are considered preliminary success rates, mainly because the month of January is used for those students who might have had incomplete grades, kind of have a chance to get their classes completed, and then we'll have a final look at our fall success rates in February. So just to start with the graph, there's some good news. You can see from the movement of the green, which represents our black students, we're slightly closing our achievement gap by about 0.5%. We had some really good news. Our black males are up 3%, mainly due to the good work that we're doing with our African-American initiatives. We also had a 1.1% increase in our online success rates, which if you consider how many classes are online right now, that's a huge boon. One thing we did notice is that our females, and especially our black females, are struggling the most. This isn't much of a surprise if you consider that they're also managing their families and their careers, and they're also trying to do school online. So we are starting to look more carefully at our females, especially our black females, and what we can bring forward because this has been a trend now for the last few terms. We also try to look every semester at one group of students. And this time, we took a really close look at our traditional-age FTIC students, those students who are 19 to 21-year-olds. And things that we noticed that they really are excelling in their AA's. If they're actually enrolled in an AA degree, that's where they're doing their best. And not surprisingly, they actually took to the live online course modality and are really enjoying that as well. If we were going to try to pick some groups that we wanted to support the most this spring to make sure that they're improving those success rates, we would look at those black females again, and of course, our part-time students. Next slide, please. So what does this mean for our fall graduates? So despite the fact that our females were struggling in the fall, it actually, our graduates were 60% female, so that's really good news. You can see that we graduated in our credit areas 2,648 students. 178 of those students actually had multiple degrees. So whether they received both an embedded certificate and their AS degree, or they received their AA and their BS degree, BAS degree, we're really proud of the work that they did. And we're also really excited to see that 37.2% of those students were actually minority students. For our non-credit side of the House, we were able to support, and that's in that black little box up at the top, our non-credit students in our workforce area. We supported 275 students getting a non-degree completion. 267 of those actually completed their class over the fall. And I wanted to take a special look at the bottom box. So this is the one with a little starburst. This is a combination of both our non-credit degree completers and our degree, and our credit degree completers. So you've, they're already represented in those two big numbers. But this is that special grant that came out of the state of Florida looking to upskill underemployed or unemployed workers in our area due to COVID. You can see that we actually served 293 students through this program, over 16 programs. And we were proud to say that, and you can see the breakdown of the different types of degrees that they received, and 105 of them also received their industry certification as part of that process. So that was a really excellent grant program that we're working through right now. Next slide, please. So let's talk a little bit about winter. So winter is our new term that we've added in, and it actually becomes part of our spring enrollment. So it's kind of like early spring enrollment. And I changed the graph on this because I think it's a drastic look at how much we're closing the achievement gap between all students and our black students. Interestingly, the vast majority of our students in our winter term were females. And you can see that they actually had a 4.9% increase in their success rate. So these shorter classes are more, are easier for our female students to actually accomplish and complete and be successful in. Our black students overall, so if you think of females going up and our black students going up 12.9%, this is a really excellent modality of a shortened class period for our black female students. Our black males, which was a very small percentage of students, they did not fare as well during these short terms. We did have 35 classes. It's the most amount of classes we've offered during our winter term. And you can see again that they're mostly female. Oh, I'm sorry. And it also produced about 2.3 of our overall spring enrollment. Next slide, please. So let's talk about our spring students. What are they looking like right now? So our average age of our spring students right now, there's 27. Three in five, or 60% of our students are females. Interestingly, we have a 7.4% increase in students who are taking a full-time class load, whether that's because they're unemployed or whether they're trying to get their degree quicker. That's a good sign for the college. It's a good sign for our students getting through their programs quicker. You can see the breakdown as to where they're enrolled, whether it's in an AS or an AA, or their bachelor's program, or they're still undeclared. But something I want to point out, which is in the bottom left-hand side, is that we are now 40.9% minority. That's a 0.7% increase. We're continuing to increase our enrollment in our minority student population and are really serving our community as well as we possibly can. And of course, importantly to you, we met our fall budget goal. We actually exceeded our fall budget goal by 3.1%. And as of last week, we were already over our spring, our spring enrollment budget goal. And so we're heading into the next couple of course modalities, and so we think that we'll exceed even further than that. So that's very good news for us.
Dr. Crawford. I think this slide, for me, is very important about the 40.9%. But I want to make sure that everyone understands the budget enrollment goal. That is what we budgeted for, for enrollment. But if we were to look at year over year, our enrollment is significantly down. I think the last time we looked, spring over spring, we're like 12% down. And so we, this time, focused on making sure that our budget would match the enrollment so that we could balance our budget. But if we were to go spring over spring, we're really 12% down in our enrollment. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Nope, that's excellent because it leaves in perfectly. So what are we doing to increase that enrollment? Go to the next slide, please. I want to rest you assured that we're doing, not only just are we focused on spring enrollment, we're also looking already at our summer and our fall enrollment. We have tons of strategies. Just want to highlight a couple of them. We have 27 career and academic community events already planned for the spring so that students will have an opportunity to learn about the different programs we offer here at the college. We're starting monthly backglow at webinars, introducing them to the, through the backglow programs that we have here at the college. And one thing that's very interesting that we wanted to point out, based upon the four-week enrollment for our winter term, we are starting a six-week I and a six-week II program for gen ed courses, trying to group some classes into pairs and suggesting that students who don't have the full time of 16 weeks, 12 weeks, or eight weeks, this is an opportunity for them to get their classes done within a six-week period. And that is my report for the day. Is there any questions that I can answer? I have one. Excuse me. On that rapid credentialing grant that we had, did we meet our goal? Yes, we met our goal. My understanding. That's awesome. Yes.
As a matter of fact, we've also received accolades from the state on the work we have done with our rapid credentialing. We just had to submit a report. And so I definitely want to give Mike Ramsey and team, our deans who have the quick programs, I want to give them kudos for the work they've done in that area.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was just going to say congratulations on the male movement of the black males. I mean, we've talked about that for, I think, 12 years. As long as I've been associated with the college.
We're getting there.
So that's huge. That, you guys really need to be congratulated for that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve it?
That we pull the union item from the consent agenda?
Separate out the?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, can you make that motion?
I make a motion that we pull the union item out from the consent agenda.
Doesn't he, doesn't he also need to say and approve?
Needs a second.
And approve the consent agenda?
Oh, and approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Informational reports.
We have to go back to that item that we just?
Yeah, we need to talk about that.
Oh, sorry, we have to go back to it. Okay. Discussion on it?
I, I, I'm more than happy to have discussion on it. Madam Chair, I appreciate the folks that came today. I think I've pretty much made myself very clear on where I stand on the whole unionization thing. Knowing the law, that has nothing to do with what we're doing, what's right or what's wrong. I think that we should vote this item down. And there are a couple of reasons that I think we should vote it down. One is, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We have employees that clean buildings, bathrooms, and all kinds of other places. We have full-time faculty and other folks who have a tremendous amount of work to do all the time. And none of them in the past five years has received one raise. The, the union is what the adjunct faculty chose. But when they took this job a long time ago, they knew that it was a part-time job. It would not have any benefits, and it would not have any rights. At any point, we could choose to not do the course or not have them as an instructor, or not even teach that class for that semester. So I would ask this board to reject this and send it back for, for us to continue to negotiate. The other thing is, there are plenty of folks during this time period that are looking for jobs. And I hate to say it that way, number one. Number two, if you look across the state of Florida and across this country, quite frankly, there are colleges, universities, everybody that are cutting back. And we're talking about spending more money. It is, I, I don't know how to, you know, I'm not trying to slap anybody in the face or say they're wrong. But I also believe, I am not against unions. Because let me just tell you something. As a part of my family that has been working with the union, and I think the unions are good to a certain degree. They, they are to be utilized when people are being mistreated or not treated right in the workforce. So if you look at sanitation workers, I have always been a strong supporter of Fred Winters and other folks who were in leadership with the sanitation workers in St. Petersburg. But I also know the history of that. Dr. King was killed fighting for sanitation workers in Memphis, and he was coming here next. He had spoken to his friend, Dr. Enik Davis, and they were coming here next to fight. Those men, Joe Savage and a bunch of those men, lost their jobs. And they were given, they couldn't even get their jobs back. Their jobs were given away to scabs, as they called them. And they couldn't get their jobs back, and most of them were well into their 70s and almost 80s before they retired. Okay? So unions should be utilized in the proper context and in the proper manner. I don't see this, where we negotiate it in fairness to the rest of the college. And I would ask, I would urge you to vote this down. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Gibbons, what is your proposed next step, if and when we do vote that down today?
Well, we send it back for negotiations. And we have a meeting with our council to give, give the president clear direction on what we expect. And they have, look, we have to accept them as a collective bargaining agent, right? Because they have decided as a group that they want to be unionized. And that's fine. That's perfectly fine. No problem with that. We will accept that. But we do not have to accept terms that we disagree with. I don't agree with giving anybody anything while we, other folks that work at this college, have not received one penny of an increase in five years. So let's, I would urge us to send it back. Let's give the president and have a meeting with our council and, and have earnest, closed-door discussion as a board with council and the president, and our representatives, our legal councils, and, and then come back and negotiate it. And if we can come up with something, then bring it back to the board. I'm not opposed to a contract.
Yeah, the specific issue is the financial piece right now, correct?
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not.
Because there's a lot in the contract, I think we're all?
The other stuff in the contract, I see, Mr. Stonecifer, I don't mean to cut you off. I mean, I'm just telling you, other stuff in the contract I see is really a non-issue. They have those things under the Constitution of the United States already. I don't know why you would put it in a union contract, but whatever. You got academic freedom. You have academic freedom under the state constitution and the other constitution of the United States. You can't stop freedom of speech. I mean, so some of those things, I, I don't know why you would want a union to do that. But if that's what you want to do, then that's fine, and they have that prerogative. But the financial piece, I'm opposed. I'm totally opposed to it.
So in my understanding, if we have one piece of it that we disagree with, then our only option is to vote it down, correct?
That's the board's decision.
If that's the board's decision, you can vote it down.
But we can't just take one piece out. It has to be the whole contract.
No, because you have to, you have to bargain in good faith.
We have to go back and rebarginate.
Well, as part of that good faith, and Mr. Gibbons, I agree with a lot of what you're saying. And, you know, I'm already, we've gone down this road a long way.
Yep.
Right? And while we disagree for the reasons of the union coming together, or that that's their-
That's their prerogative. I can't stop them from doing that, right?
That's their prerogative, so it is what it is at this point. I would just say that if we do vote down today, that we, in good faith, try to come up with some sort of specific plan or timetable forward, because what I don't want to happen is this to continue to get kicked down the road for 12 months, 18 months, whatever it is. I think at a certain point in the near future, we need to settle on a contract and move on.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
But Mr. Stonecifer, just be reminded that in all negotiations, you could have stalls, and you could come to an impasse. That may very well be what happens. I am fine with setting a timeline and moving it forward to negotiate. I don't, I think I said in the first part of my comments, which you agree with, is that we go back, talk to our council, come back, sit back at the table, let Dr. Williams or whoever we designate to sit at the table and come back, and they can go back and forth and try to figure it out. Now, I will tell you, you know, firefighters in St. Petersburg are good people. They went years without a contract because they came to impasse.
Right.
That doesn't mean we're not negotiating in good faith. We just disagree on certain things. And that's fair, and I think that's what we need to do, is to just be fair. I don't want to attack anybody or shut them down. I'm just saying, hey, I can't agree to the financial portion of this, me personally. Now, everybody else can do whatever they like to do, but I personally, I don't, I just don't, you know, I can't do that.
Understood.
Mr. Kidwell, any comment?
No, I think that's great discussion. I think, you know, I do think we need to, at least, you know, if we say no, we have to have a plan moving forward, as Nathan said. Look, it sounds to me like we need to discuss this more, and I'm all for discussing it more as long as we put a timeline in place.
So then the motion-
Well, I'll add to my motion with you, I mean, here's my problem with putting a timeline in place. What if Dr. Williams and the team and the union, I say three months, and it takes them six? You see what I'm saying? That's my problem. I would leave that up to Dr. Williams and the union.
I think I'm talking about a timeline for what is our responsibility.
Yeah, exactly.
So, sure.
I would more, I mean, I wouldn't say more than three months for the college to get together and figure out where we're headed as a unit in the negotiations. I wouldn't think it would take more than three months. Dr. Williams, do you?
Absolutely not. I think it would not take that long at all.
Well, I'll make my motion that it takes the college, you know, no more than 90 days to get back to the union on our expectations on a contract, and they can give us their expectations, and, I mean, then the bargaining begins again, I guess, and they can bring it back to the board.
Is there a second?
Suzanne has one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just timing-wise, if we rejected and declined to ratify, we would go back into collective bargaining, have discussions, and then the board would have the ability to have negotiating sessions, closed sessions on it. But we would have to go back into collective bargaining.
Yeah, right away, you'd have to go back and talk.
So is there a risk on setting a timeline, then, with that, because we don't actually know?
There, I don't think there's a risk on us showing our good faith to move forward.
Okay.
But we will have to-
And that's a part of-
We will have to go back to collective bargaining with the union, which we-
I have no problem with that.
That would be their schedule.
I think the statute says you have to bargain in good faith, right?
That's correct.
So that's a part of what Mr. Kidwell and Mr. Stonecifer are saying. I have no problems with that. That's why I'm recommending the 90 days.
That's fine.
On our end, right?
Yeah.
On our end. And what they do on their end, we can't control.
That's correct.
More so than a timeline is the good faith.
Yeah.
Going back to-
Do you want to state it again, or are we good? Is there a second?
The motion is to, is to, I guess, it has to be to vote this item down, but with a 90-day work period from us to come up with a plan to negotiate with, in good faith, with the union, the faculty adjunct union.
Chair Cole, I forgot about you. Do you have any comments you'd like to add or questions?
No, thank you. I appreciate Trustee Gibbons' comments, and this is something that we've kind of talked through, and I do want to express, from a timing standpoint, I know that we received this in November, but without having a board meeting in December, this was the first opportunity for the trustees collectively to even have a discussion about it. So while I know the timing may be frustrating to receive this feedback, this is the first opportunity we did have to have this conversation.
Madam Chair, point of clarity. Chairperson Cole said this is something that we talked through. She didn't talk to any other board member. She was just saying we talked through, I guess, with whoever at faculty or whatever, or staff. But I just want to make sure that, because that's on the record. I don't want her to seem like she violated the sunshine, because she never talked to me.
No, 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 that was the whole point of my comments.
Yes, ma'am.
This was the first opportunity we've had to collectively talk about this. While we received correspondence from the administration on it in November, because we didn't have a board meeting in December, we didn't have the opportunity to speak about it until today.
Yes, ma'am. I just didn't want your first comment to be misconstrued.
Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Aye.
Now we can move on to informational reports.
You don't vote on those. You guys, is there anything you want to share?
We, I think so. We voted for the consent agenda, aside from that first, right?
Yeah, we did the consent agenda already.
Yeah.
So we're now to my report.
The informational reports.
Yep.
Yeah, there's no vote there. Madam Chair, we just move on to the president's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. No changes to the Board of Trustees' Rules Manual, so president's report.
Yep. Thank you so much. I have a walk-on item. We recently received an offer for some wetlands, property that we own in Tarpon Springs, and we've had offers for this property a lot of times. This isn't the first time, but this is the first time that the offer is worth us at least looking at. And so I'm asking the board to give me permission to engage the organization, to engage the organization through a letter of intent, but it's predicated on several things. It's predicated on the Florida statutes and state regulations. It's predicated on, of course, the board's approval, the broker's opinion of value, the work we have to do on the disposal in the best interest of the institution and state, approval of the spot survey. So there's a lot of things, but instead of waiting until the February meeting, I'm asking the board to allow me to at least engage and put together a letter of intent with all of those things behind it and bring it back. And if there are any questions you have, it's to share those, and I'll get you the answers while we're doing the rest of the investigation and working with this proposal.
Do we need a formal motion for that?
Yes. Because it's above that threshold. Yeah, we do. I need to-
So I move that we give Dr. Williams the authority to engage or not engage if she sees fit on the wetlands at Tarpon Springs and allow her to negotiate to bring something back to the board if necessary.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor. I knew what I was going to say.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
All right, thank you so much. The other thing I really wanted to share with the board is a little bit of what Mr. Schoonover talked about, Schoonover talked about, is the CARES Act. And the funds that we've received, we've received two sets of funds for CARES Act money to help support the college and students. The CARES Act money is one-time money, so it's not money that we can use for a lot of personnel and, you know, recurring expenses, but for one time. The first time that we received the funds, we ended up, the money was very regulated. Like, you could not use it for lost revenue. You could not use it to substitute the needs of the institution. It was things that were highly aligned with COVID that we could prove that because of COVID, this happened, and we can use the money for that. What we're hearing is they may start loosening up on that a little bit, but we've spent and encumbered quite a bit of those funds to help us with technology, to help us with the library science fee, the fees that we have with that, and a little bit for learning resources. Half of the money we received had to be spent directly on students. Like, we had to give the students the money to live off of or to support them for whatever the needs were. If you recall, we gave students direct money for $500 a pop. The foundation also gave funding to help those students. Well, this time, the college received on the second round $29 million of stimulus funds. 6.4 million must be given directly to students. The rest is for the institution. We have, we've attended about three meetings to find out if the money has been loosened to be able to use for lost revenue. So far, we've not received anything in writing, just conversations that maybe we're going to do this or we're going to do that. The other piece is we're waiting to see where we land with the state before spending those funds. The team is going to every meeting that we get from the federal government. AACC had a meeting last week we attended on the use of the funds. We have not received that as we did the first go-around. They gave us a list of what we can't do. We have not received that as of yet. So for the college family, we want to make sure you knew we received those funds, but right now, we still do not have a good understanding of what they can be used for, but we know that they are one-time dollars. Like, you can't use it for sustainability to have in a recurring way. Trustee Gibbons?
I happened to be in Washington last week, and I happened to have a meeting with some of the president and vice president's staff, and they are putting a list of things together that is going to look much different than it did before.
Good.
It's not done. There, I know that the discussions that they're having are how students have been affected, how students are impacted by colleges. Say, if we're not having live classes, then the technology is definitely used for it. So they're looking across the board to make sure they're not missing anything. I know that for HBCUs, which doesn't affect us, they are looking at forgiving loans and also allowing some of that money to be utilized for facilities, management, operation, because a lot of their facilities are getting old. I would assume that they are going to look at that, and they're going down a checklist of things, and look at that for universities and community colleges as well. The thing is, they're looking at them in silos. So universities are over here, community colleges are over here, and HBCUs are over here. So, and the HBCUs, quite frankly, have been pushed out because, and when I say pushed out, I mean, put in their own silo.
Right.
Is because their, their buildings and facilities tend to be much older, with a lot less funding from state and federal programs. Over the years, they have been overlooked. So that's why they've been out put in their own silo. But, all that being said, I know that there is a list coming. When that will be here, I'm not sure. So I think the way that you guys are looking at it is probably the smartest way to do that.
Thank you. Trustee Gibbons, is it possible for us to provide you with what we would recommend, and you share that?
You know, the first 100 days is hard to get. I got in, I don't think I'll be getting back in, just to tell you. But I'm more than happy to give you the information of individuals that I know, and you can send it on to them.
Okay, because that would be very helpful. And keeping in mind that we still have the holdback, is it 6%?
6%.
6% holdback each month that we, you know, less revenues each month from the state. Not sure that with us anticipating a $2.7 billion deficit with the state that, you know, we'll recoup that anytime soon. So with that, I'm just trying to not paint a negative picture, but I want everyone to understand the truth of where we are and what could be coming down the pipe. The good news is the work that the college has done, the administration, the faculty, everyone, to downsize our expenses, to look at how we can partner together and do things more efficiently, has saved us. And I would applaud you for that work, but we still have a long way to go to get through our COVID issues and the impact of that. And so we'll be looking at further efficiencies and alignments to make sure that when this next round of declines come, and I believe they will, that we're prepared and we've made the necessary adjustments and changes for that. And so just hang in there, and we'll continue to move forward. So that was that piece. And the last piece that's dealing with legislative pieces, the commissioner has asked to meet with the college presidents, so we'll be, part of us may be in Ocala, part of us may be online, to talk about what's going to happen going forward for the Florida college system. Your VPs have been very involved in the Council of Instructional Affairs, Academic Affairs, and Business Affairs to make sure that we are actively participating. There are quite a few bills that have been proposed. We will be sending those out to the college that we're keeping our eye on and what that impact may be for the college should those bills pass. And so we'll keep you apprised of those things, as well as the college president's legislative asks going forward. So you'll know what we're looking for and where we're going as a system. But the bottom line is we're going to have to tighten a little bit more, and we're also going to have to be more creative in our course offerings. Thank you, Dr. Lee Atroth, for the work you're doing in offering those shorter terms, as well as the work we're doing in recruitment and getting more hands clicking on lines and bodies in seats. And so that is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I believe the last thing is our next meeting date and site, which is February 16th here at 9:00.
Yes.
And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.